Good evening. I call to order this September the 18th, 2018, regular meeting of the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees. Welcome. Thank you all for joining us. And here, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Thank you, Superintendent.
Good afternoon. Actually, we're gonna have a filling. Our representative is running behind, but we, someone else is gonna stand in for us. School Board members, Dr. Murray, I will present to you Ms. Erica Peyton. Erica's a senior at Provine High School. She's also senior class president, and she's also the school board representative for Provine.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Stand, S.S.P.
Oh, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Hold it one second.
Thank you so much. We'd like to make your picture, and thank you for being willing to step up when others have a little difficulty. Thank you. Is Dr. Robert William Lowery with us? Thank you. Please come forward as I introduce you. Rob Lowery joined the Fondren Presbyterian Church staff in January 2017. Most recently, he served as the stated clerk of the Presbyterian of Arkansas for the Presbyterian Church USA, and as dean of the chapel at the University of the Ozarks in Clarksville, Arkansas. Since his ordination in 2001, he has served churches in Arkansas, Louisiana, Michigan, and taught as an adjunct faculty member at Hendrix College, and guest lecturer at the University of Arkansas at Little Rock, the University of Michigan, and the University of Aberdeen. And, excuse me. An Arkansas native, Rob grew up in Little Rock and was a member of Second Presbyterian Church. He holds degrees from Millsaps College, go majors, Austin Presbyterian Theological Seminary, and Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary at Northwestern University. In 2010, he completed his doctoral work at Columbia Theological Seminary in Atlanta. Rob served on multiple committees and boards, both in the Presbyterian Church and in the larger community, including Vera Lloyd Presbyterian Children's Home and Family Services, and the Texas Presbyterian Foundation. He currently serves as part of the leadership of Jackson's Everytown for Gun Sense in America, Moms Demand Action. Rob is a fierce advocate for public education, child welfare, safe communities, and ministries of reconciliation. When he is not working, Rob enjoys spending time with his family, spoiling his nearly perfect niece and nephew, traveling and reading. Please welcome Dr. Robert William Lowery.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the invitation to be here tonight to offer what I think is a wonderfully titled Words of Encouragement. As a child of public education, I welcome the opportunity to come back and give a little word of encouragement to the people who supported me in my childhood. In my religious tradition, words were written almost 2,000 years ago to a fledgling religious community. A very wise and sage member of the community wrote these words. Because we are surrounded by so great a cloud of witnesses, we shake off all that encumbers us and run with perseverance the race that is ahead of us. The great cloud of witnesses, what a wonderful way to think about public education. We often think about that cloud of witnesses as being populated by just the saints of the church, but my cloud of witnesses includes Mrs. Smith, who taught me to love to read in the first grade, and Mrs. Hart, who taught me that multiplication tables would matter one day, and Mrs. Ayers, who taught me that that stutter would not last forever, and Dr. Babs, who taught me that detention wasn't the end of the world after all. There was Mrs. Escobar, who kept the peace of the playground, and Mr. George, who drove Bus 41B from Stevens Intermediate School in Little Rock. There was Tamalika at George Elementary, who taught me how to wear my Dr. Seuss hat last year, and Jamarcus, who promised me that when he's in the NFL, the Saints will never lose again. We are all part of this cloud of witnesses that surround and uphold our students, who are the pride and the joy of our community. Teachers, technicians, support staff, administrators, board members, parents, family, friends, partners in education, all of us, come together to do the most important thing in our community. So tonight, my words of encouragement to you are these. Remember that you are surrounded by a great cloud of witnesses. Students, remember that you are surrounded by a great cloud of witnesses, people who are coming together in common cause, to support you, to cheer you on. We might not always agree. We are always running the same race, with the same cause, and the same goal, to do the best we can, to build good, honest, thoughtful citizens for a better Jackson, today, and tomorrow, and the day after. Thank you all for that, and thank you for the chance to be with you tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lowery. Wonderful words of inspiration. And if you'll pause to have your picture made, please. Thank you so much. Let the record show that we do have a quorum. We have three board members seated and one board member on the phone, and now we have a fourth board member seated. Thank you, Attorney Johnson. You may join me over here. Thank you. And we just established a quorum. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Board members, you have the agenda before you. Do I hear a...
I move for the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Second. It has been moved. I do have... Ms. Williams, the second MOA, does it, does it show on the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Williams. I wanted to be sure they're actually board, you will notice, and they have been distributed. There are two MOAs with the community foundation under that one item B. I wanted to be sure. With that information for myself, to be sure, I have heard a motion to approve the agenda, and it has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Heard the aye on the phone. The agenda has been adopted as presented. Our next item is the reading and approval of the minutes. Board members, our minutes were distributed earlier for the regular board meeting on August 21st, the special board meeting on August 27th, and the regular board meeting of September 4th. Do I hear any discussion or questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes for the August 21st, 27th, and September 4th, 2018 board meetings.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes A, B, and C, August 21st, 27th, and September 4th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes have been read and approved as distributed. Item five, Attorney Turner, do we have comments for public participation?
Board members, you have one person who's signed up to address you in executive session, but his matter is a personnel matter, and I've just spoken to him, and explained to him we'll need to hold it until executive session.
Great, thank you. Hearing no other requests for comments, we will, we will hear from Don Barnhill with the Partnership for Healthy Mississippi. Thank you. And while Don Barnhill is coming up, let the record show that we have a fifth board member seated. Thank you. Ms. Barnhill?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, Dr. Murray, and the Board of Trustees, Marshall Elementary School was one of 24 schools chosen to receive the School Health Technical Assistant Project under the Partnership's Whole Schools, Healthy Communities, Improving the Culture of Health in Mississippi Project. The project was administered by the Partnership for a Healthy Mississippi and funded by the W.K. Kellogg Foundation. We are also the recipient of the Game On Grant for the 2018-2019 school year. This technical assistant will allow our school health council to meet a minimum of three times a year, and with overall focus on the coordinated approach to school health as mandated by the Mississippi's Healthy Students Act. During the meetings, we found that in the eight areas, our greatest strengths are school health and safety, policies and environment, and social and emotional climate. We aim to continue to succeed in these areas of school health. During the meetings, we also found our greatest weakness are employee wellness and health promotion and community involvement. From this, our school health council developed an attainable action plans to improve in these areas. We, you know, the areas we set to host a school-wide health fair for teachers and students, host a CPR training session for the staff, and a wellness walk for the staff as well. Upon completion of the first year of the two-year grant period, Marshall Elementary will receive a $500 check to use toward the identified action plans and other health-related activities for our school. On completion of the second year of the grant period, our school will receive 250 more once we complete additional benchmarks. We are confident that the Jackson Public School Board will support us in our quest to improve the health of our school. We appreciate the time and effort given by all of our school board members in order to constantly improve our school system.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhill. We appreciate that update from Marshall. Board members, you have questions or comments for Ms. Barnhill? Our kudos to your staff, and thank you for your report. Item six, Dr. Merritt, the CAP update.
Good evening to Dr. Harrison and board members, and Dr. Murray. Just briefly, as it relates to the CAP update, we'll, I'll start with the good news, in that we have cleared another standard, which is Standard Two, Licensed Staff. According to the plan that we have in place in hiring staff and clearing personnel edits, the department did see fit to clear that standard. So I do want to recognize Ms. Lyons, Ms. Miller, and their department for the hard work that's been done in accomplishing that task and us clearing another standard. The team met on last week, and we are establishing, or re-establishing cross-functional teams in determining the best path and proceeding in how to clear the remaining standards. The ones that are upcoming, that we feel comfortable with are Standards 6.1, which is residential requirement, 6.2, and Standard 8, permanent records. And all of those standards go together. Dr. Sargent has put a very stringent process in place to make sure that those records are being reviewed at the school level. I know with our smaller schools, we'll be through before or on November 1st, but with high schools, it may extend a little bit before. We are proud of the work that Mr. McCracken is doing in facilities currently. Out of the 55 schools that we have, 43 have been cleared of deficiencies. There are 12 remaining, and two, we will be requesting clearance either this week or next week for the department to come out and review. So we are operating with a sense of urgency to make sure that we address all deficiencies outlined in the CAP.
Thank you so much. Board members, you have questions or comments for Dr. Merritt? Please extend our congratulations and respect to your team. Dr. Murray, you all have been doing a wonderful job clearing these standards and getting the work done. We appreciate that.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Dr. Murray, you have others, remarks from your update.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, board members, community. We have a few additional announcements. Tonight is my pleasure to introduce our student representatives to the board. They are here tonight, and I'm gonna read a short bio on those individuals and ask them to come forward and remain standing. It'll be short, I promise it won't be, won't take very long. But a few years ago, we instituted a policy of board representatives. These students represent their high schools, and they are mentored by board members. A board member is assigned to each of the students, and the students will provide real-time feedback to the board and to the community. And so, starting at our next board meeting, they will report out two per board meeting. And so, we are privileged to have you all here tonight, and we really wanna make sure that you understand that we wanna hear from you, so that we can improve and be better supporters of your work. And so, at this time, I'm going to, when I call your name, please come forward. Blair Lee. Blair is currently a senior at Lanier. She currently serves as sergeant major in TROTC. She's captain of cheerleader team, and she's a member of the National Honor Society. She plans on attending all corn and majoring in nursing. Eric Peyton, Provine Senior. She plays basketball. She's the president of her senior class. She's a member of Alpha, Mu, Alpha Theta. She's the president, actually, and also president of the National Honor Society. She plans to attend Jackson State and major in pediatric neurology. Okay? Shamaya Thompson.
Shamaya.
Shamaya, I'm sorry. Shamaya Thompson. Shamaya's a senior at Wingfield. She's the battalion commander of the Mighty Falcon Battalion. She's a captain of the girls' cross-country team, National Honor Society, member of Student Government Association, also Operation Shoestring Ambassador. She plans to attend Florida A&amp;M or Texas Southern and plans to be a lawyer. Chidaya?
Chidaya.
Chidaya Thompson, Jim Hill. She's a senior, member of National Honor Society, office worker, and member of Student Government Association. She plans to attend Jackson State University and plans to become an accountant. Mark Evans. Mark is a senior at Forrest Hill. He's a member of numerous clubs and activities, National Honor Language Club, National Honor Society Basketball Team, and foreign language. He plans to attend Mississippi State after graduating, with the goal of becoming an occupational therapist, once he completes his higher studies. Two of our, you see, these are a very busy group of students, and two of them could not be with us tonight. Kelsey Ford, she's a senior at Callaway, wants to attend University of Southern Mississippi. She participates in cheerleader volleyball, and she wants to be a registered nurse. And then lastly, Victoria Baker from Murrah. She's an APAC student, involved in performing arts theater. She's captain of the softball team, student body president, member of Mu, Alpha Theta, National Honor Society, and small organizations. She hopes to attend Florida A&amp;M or Tuskegee to pursue her dream of becoming a veterinarian. Let's give these students a round of applause. Okay, next announcement, JPS, I'm sorry, administrative staff, parents, community partners, join the Jackson Public Schools for its Fall Parent-Family Engagement Conference. This event will be held Thursday, September the 27th, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Jackson Convention Complex located at 105 East Pascagoula Street. The conference is free to JPS parents, and childcare will be provided. The keynote speaker will be John Robinson, Senior, Director of Education and Youth Development with the Houston Area Urban League. More conference highlights include parent sessions, exhibitors, food, and door prizes. Attendants will also get information on JPS student service. Pre-registration forms are available at the JPS Family Resource Center, located at 101. Dr. Dennis Holloway Drive. For more information, please visit the district's website at jackson.k12.ms.us, or call us at And lastly, I think I saw several of our principals in the audience, and as always, I wanna recognize our principals. These are the people that make the wheels roll, along with the teachers in the building. So if you all could please stand and be recognized, let's celebrate our principals that are here. These have been the superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Murray, and we always are happy to see our principals. You have our heart and our good support right along with you as you do this work. And to our students, thank you so much for joining us, and we are serious about hearing from you and getting your ideas, and so please, talk among yourselves, and we welcome your remarks. We haven't really decided how they'll come, two by two, but if for any reason, if there's some reason you have relationships with each other and wanna work together, let us know. And so much of the work going on in the district now, we're in partnership with lots of folk, but one thing this board agreed on early was that we want our work to be student-focused, and we don't wanna ever lose sight of the needs of our students and our parents and caregivers. And so, thank you for joining us in this work. Okay, item seven, we have information items only. Dr. Davidson, annual report from the Obama Magnet Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kathleen Grexby, and I'm currently principal at Obama Magnet, and with me, I have my IB coordinator.
My name is Beth Roach.
And we're here to provide information based on the Primary Years Program standard. The school has developed a system to keep the governing body informed about the ongoing implementation and development of the program. So Ms. Roach is gonna talk about where we've been, and I'll share where we are now and where we're going.
We chose to focus on our last five years in the Primary Years Program. I did want to mention that we have been authorized, authorized to offer the program since 2005, so this is our 13th year in the program. Over the past five years, we have been tasked with rectifying 11 matters to be addressed from our 2013 evaluation, and we did successfully resolve all those matters to be addressed. We've implemented a program that's in high demand in our community, as evidenced by the 269 entrance assessments that we administered last year for only 60 student spots available in our building. We've worked really hard on enhancing the collaboration between our instructional staff to enhance teaching and learning for our students. We transitioned our gifted education program to a push-in delivery model to improve our implementation of the Primary Years Program. Over the past five years, we've maintained a consistent A rating through statewide accountability testing, which is, demonstrates our high student achievement and high-quality instruction. And we've also achieved 100% proficiency on the statewide third-grade assessment related to the Literacy-Based Promotion Act, and we've done so since the inception of that test.
Okay, so where we are now, we're completing our third IB PYP self-study. We completed that last year, and our evaluation visit as of today. So the IB organization were here at the school yesterday, all day, and today, all day. And so, we're awaiting the evaluation report from IBO with an anticipated date or timeframe of January 2019. We're currently building a shared leadership of the IB PYP within the school leadership team to strengthen implementation and program ownership. We're currently delivering rigorous concept-based curriculum through the inquiry instruction, implementing a global awareness grant for approximately $10,000. We're improving physical education and outdoor classroom facilities through grant funds. We unveiled the mural commemorating Barack Obama. We are currently fundraising for signage and exterior improvements related to the school name change. We're continuing to offer professional development, or teacher-developed after-school enrichment activity twice a week. And we're also anticipating continued distinction as the number-one elementary school in the state based on student performance, including 100 points of growth on state accountability test for the second year in a row. So we're excited and looking forward to the upcoming information coming from the state within the next couple of days. Where we're going, support possible growth of additional IB programs in the district, continue to implement the IB PYP in alignment with the enhanced PYP, which will be released soon, and the updated IB standards and practices, and to ensure access to IB PYP professional development for teachers to ensure continuity and program delivery. And from a point of personal privilege, we wanna thank the, the district for their continuous support of the IB program over the last five years. The representatives said that they have seen so much growth, and I'll be sharing in an email some additional information that they have shared with us today.
Thank you so much for that wonderful update. I know that...
Very impressive.
Yeah, I know that Dr. Halyard is very pleased with the growth of everything.
And especially, where are we going, 2019 and beyond? Support possible growth of additional programs in the district. I like that.
Yep.
I have had four children to come through Davis, and we've had a wonderful experience, and their educational success, I really do... and, um, their educational success, I really do, um, give credit to Davis.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, appreciate it. Continuing with our agenda, item B, Attorney Shepherd, the review and revisions of Section B policies. She's on the phone. Attorney Shepherd?
I'm sorry, are they calling me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members. Dr. Murray, you have before you several policies, um, that are the result of the hard work of the Policy Committee. The first policy section that are for review is the Policy C section and that deals with the school board operation. There are some changes that have been recommended to select policies and I will just highlight some of those for you. One in particular is the policy that deals with administrative consultants. Language, uh, has been revised to include the approval of the school board. If you look at the policy, it now says that, uh, the superintendent can approve the requisite consultants, but the language will be revised to make that approval, it's a board approval. Also, some procedural forms will change with that policy. The next policy is the public participation policy. The Policy Committee reviewed it. They noticed that a lot of the language were, was procedural in nature, so that's going to be pulled out and placed in the procedure section of the policy. The student representative policy is duplicative with the student board member representative policy. However, the language in one of the policies will be clarified to say that students can attend the board meeting even if they're not a student board representative. So those policies will all be placed out in the school committee and will be placed on the website to check that the board can review the section C policy. There are other policies that are necessitated by changes in state board policy and one of those is the high school graduation requirement policy. And I believe that the board has any questions about that specific policy, Dr. Murray, we can be ready to answer questions. But again, that will be placed in the school community for review and comment. And then finally, board members, there are policies that all need to be revised based on comments from the Bailey Group and Dr. Murray, and that was largely dealt with instructional policies such as the school day, the number of minutes, uh, that the students have remaining class to receive instructions. And just clarifying some of the language for instance, in the J section of the policies, there's some language that deals with due process and explosions and suspensions and that language will be clarified. I do want to say that that, those policies will also be placed out in the school committee for review and, or comment and they will be brought back to the board at the next meeting because they are part of the board staff. And finally, I just want to com- compliment the Policy Committee on all of the hard work that they have done and making sure that the policies are reviewed and revised. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Shepherd, uh, for bringing this up, uh, at this meeting for information and to, um, distribute in the community for discussion and deliberation and we will reconsider these again at our next board meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, information, action items, uh, we have three items. A, B, uh, two items, two, two MOAs under one. Attorney Turner?
Board members, as you know, um, at your August twenty-first, two-thousand-and-eighteen board meeting, we moved forward with adopting the appointment resolution for Dr. Green. Um, finalization of his employment by the board and the district was contingent upon the issuance by MDE of, excuse me, his administrator's license. Um, we submitted the resolution, the license was received by us immediately thereafter and so the only remaining step in the process was the board's approval of the actual employment contract with Dr. Green. We've gone through some negotiations back and forth and I have for you in hard copies. Um, this is the same version of the agreement that we talked about the last time the board discussed and we have sent this, I have sent this to Dr. Green's attorney. She has reviewed it and she has agreed to these terms and conditions also. So the only thing that is remaining, um, with regard to finalizing Dr. Green's employment is the board's approval of this actual contract document and I'll pass out hard copies to each of you.
Thank you, and this is the same document?
One that you would have received by email earlier.
Right. Uh, thank you, Attorney Turner. Do I hear a motion to approve the employment contract for Dr. Eric Green?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the employment contract for Dr. Eric Green. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved as distributed earlier. We have item B, we have two memorandum of agreement between the Community Foundation of Mississippi and the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees. Uh, board members, you have received these MOAs prior. Is there question or discussion? Uh, hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve item B with the two MOAs?
Madam President, I move that we approve both contracts.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the two MOAs have been approved. Item nine, consent agenda items under finance, uh, Ms. Miller. Items A through F.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Uh, Dr. Murray, members of the board, I present to you consent agenda items finance A through F, recommendation to dispose of surplus property. Item B, approval of the contract with the Mississippi Fair Commission for the two-hundred, two-thousand-and-nineteen high school graduation exercises. Item C, approval of the payments to certify staff through the school recognition program. Item D, approval of disbursements in accounts payable in activity funds for August twenty-fifth through September seventh. Item E, recommendation to approve formal bid number RFP twenty-eighteen dash oh-six for exceptional education, speech, language, pathology service providers. And item F, the approval of the monthly financial report for August thirty-first, for month ended August thirty-first, two-thousand-and-eighteen.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for distributing this information earlier. Board members, I have one comment and then, um, happy to hear your pleasure. The contract for the high school graduation exercises, what are the dates?
Oh, the dates are May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, two-thousand-and-nineteen. That is the Tuesday and Wednesday after Memorial Day.
I have one question. Last year when we changed our dates, did we still have to pay that contract?
We did not. We had not entered into it with them at that time, so.
Board members, if I might just mention, um, with regard to the item approval of formal bids and RFP, that, um, recommendation does include the approval of a contract also. The contract was subsequently uploaded in your board materials, so if you move forward with that, we'd like you to approve both the award but also the contract that would authorize the board, I mean authorize district administration to move forward with that.
Which one is that?
The RFP formal bids.
So that includes the Fair Commission contract, is that what you're saying? It's a different contract?
I was talking about the one for exceptional education.
Right, got you, got you. Uh, board, what is your pleasure regarding these items?
I have one question on item E. Um, the duration of the contract was cut off.
Let me see.
It's just one year.
That's all I needed.
Okay.
Board, uh, what's your pleasure regarding these items?
I move.
Approval of the items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved consent agenda items A through F. Uh, and properly seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, these consent agenda items have been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Consent agenda items general, uh, Dr. Sergeant, uh, well, actually, let me back up a minute. We have several items here that I believe, uh, we could group together. There are three that I think we need to pull for greater discussion, although, um, I do want to hear the PowerPoint under M, so maybe we need to pull M two. So, board, uh, do I hear, or may, I'll make the motion that we pull items C, D, L, and M for some discussion? C regarding the, uh, UMC School of Dentistry. D, the Trend Setters Reading Mentor Program, and these are just a few questions that I think board members have. L with the, um, jobs for Mississippi graduates and M, uh, the, uh, lead partner's support for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. So do I hear a motion? To pull those items and consider the others for approval as one?
I, I move that we approve consent agenda items with the exceptions of C, D, L, and M, which we will pull for further consideration.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve consent agenda items ten with the exception of C, D, L, and M. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Dr. Sergeant, we've read your reports, uh, and, uh, Dr. Merritt, but we will hear from you as well. Thank you. Uh, item C, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the UMC School of Dentistry and JPS.
Hi.
Yes, you have questions or you want me to explain the project?
Uh, I just had a question, uh, regarding, um, uh, the length, uh, that we've been in this partnership with School of Dentistry and, and do we have any data or that helps us understand our success of the program and how many young folk we serve and parent engagement, just some general information about that?
I don't have the data with me right now, but I've been in this position two years, so this is the second year under my leadership that we have been in this partnership with UMC. There's supposed to be an audience, is Ms. Lungino here? Come on. She may have the background, um, before my two years. But I can share that the students are in great need of dental service and it plays a great part in their academic, um, growth and development. If your teeth are not in working order, then there are some issues that are related to school, whether it's attendance, um, whether you're paying attention because your teeth are hurting.
And I know that you all, I understand you have some questions regarding the data as far as how many students we've served and all of that. Unfortunately, I do not have that information. I too am a, um, I'm sorry, thank you. I too am a new, uh, staff member to the School of Dentistry. However, one of the things that I would like to point out is that there is a need for these students to come and to get this dental care. One thing that we will be doing, uh, is screening, X-rays, cleanings, and then doing follow-up services for these children. Um, the students that are unable or do not have any source of insurance, they will receive these services for free. And we have also secured a grant for funding for transportation for the students, so it won't cost the school anything other than the students, you know, missing that particular day to come. So the, uh, plan is for pre-K through second to come, to start off first and until we rotate through all of the classes and get those children seen and then for our mission, Dental Mission Week, we'll have Give Kids a Smile Day where the third through fifth grade will attend and come during that particular day for treatment as well. Um, I can give that information for you as far as, um, how many pa- patients we've seen, uh, outcomes and, and things like that, parent engagement. Uh, but again, it's, it's an, it's a wonderful program. A lot of children, uh, there, well, there are a lot of kids that do have the opportunity to, to see a dentist, but there are some children that may not, uh, get that opportunity to see a dentist and this is a good way for them to be able to come in and, and have their own health taken care of.
Thank you so much and I appreciate your both sharing and, and of course, I know Dr. Knox, but neither of you beautiful ladies are Dr. Knox. Do you mind sharing with us your name and your position?
Lorinda Cheeks, Director of Student Support Service, directly under Dr. Knox.
Thank you.
And I'm Melody Lungino, I'm the Project Manager for the School of Dentistry, Clinical Affairs.
Thank you, and please know that our questions, my questions, are just to learn and, and understand and we appreciate the partnership very much and we're always looking for data that shows that our partnerships are strong and robust and we're really meeting the needs of our parents and children, so.
Absolutely.
That's why we're, we're trying to be very attentive, so I appreciate you, uh, colleagues stepping up and beginning that process for us.
Now, one thing I can share with the board is, is for our Dental Mission Week, Give Kids a Smile Day, we service two-hundred-and-fifty-three students that particular day. Um, and in total, we service one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three adults and children together. Uh, and it, it came out to be somewhere around twenty-three-hundred procedures that were done. Uh, we also had patients that received dentures too as well.
And also, I have the data that I can forward to you from last year, I just don't have it on me.
No, that's fine, appreciate it. Thank you so much for sharing. Uh, and, um, board members, is that good with that one? Uh, item D, uh, Thea Faulkner. Oh, should we vote on that one right now? Well, look, you want to vote on item C since we just finished discussing it? Do I hear a motion to approve item C?
Some o.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor of approving the MO with the UMC School of Dentistry, it's signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that MOA has been approved. Uh, Ms. Faulkner, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, board members. The administration submits for your approval the Third Amendment to the Strategic Alliance Agreement, uh, with the Teen Trend Setters Reading Mentorship Program between the Barbara Bush Foundation and Jackson Public School District.
Thank you, Ms. Faulkner. I, I have a couple of questions about this. It sounds like a very exciting program. Uh, is this the first time we've been in partnership with this organization?
No, ma'am, this is actually our fourth year.
Fourth year?
Yes.
Do we have a track record of some of the, uh, good work that's been accomplished over those four years, some data to?
I do have some data, um, that was printed back in May of various benchmarks. The, uh, foundation is set up where it actually tracks beginning and ending reading data for the students who receive mentors. Uh, the mentors come from our middle and high schools, um, so there isn't a mechanism within the foundation to look at any data for the mentors, but in talking to, there's a program advisor at each one of the sites, at the middle school and the high school, and this is not for students who are the, uh, track stars or the homecoming queens or the, you know, the, the quarterback. These are for students who maybe- These are for students who maybe don't have an opportunity to participate in various activities, and it gives them an opportunity to move into a leadership position. So they really are very strategic in making partnerships between students, the mentors and the mentees, that they have something in common. We might have two, uh, ELS students. We might have a student who is, um, maybe just dealing with some anxiety at the high school or middle school, partnered with a child that's having some anxiety at the elementary school. So it just gives our students and opportunity, teenagers, to, to mentor and, um, just be a positive force in an elementary school child's life. We try to remain within a feeder pattern, I believe all of our programs remain within a feeder pattern. So they have conversations about what it's like to be in middle school and high school. And, uh, it's just been some amazing success stories about the difference in the high school and middle school children uh, who service mentors, as well as the increase in reading levels at the elementary level.
Do your, uh, high school and middle school students receive training or preparation or?
They do receive some training, and there's a program advisor that travels to the middle school with them, excuse me, to the elementary school with them. So they basically observe what they're doing and provide feedback and direction to them on an ongoing basis. Um, the, all of the, um, material is provided by the Barbara Bush Teen Trend Setter Foundation, and so they're given information about actually how to use the, uh, the materials. There's a lot of scholastic magazines and books that they use, and they are given some instruction, and just directives as the program goes throughout the year.
And I noticed that, um, the, uh, data, part of the contract, well, the program requires that the participant data, including local mentee reading assessments, post-test scores, given in either grade level equivalent, Lexile or RIT scores. Are we participating in those assessments, and which scores are included in our assessments?
So when the assessments are done at the beginning of the year, that information is shared, um, from the district office with the, um, person who is our point of contact, with Barbara Bush. And then the end of the year data is also given as well, and she produces the report that I just shared with you all this afternoon.
Great. Uh, and one more question, I noticed on the paperwork that Dr. Michelle King was listed as our.
Well, that's an oversight on my part, and I apologize, so we'll have to correct.
Correct that and let us know the person who will be for that.
Yes ma'am.
And this comes at no cost to the district, other than?
It is at no cost to the district, of my time. Uh, and we also have an in-kind donation where we provide the transportation between the school sites who need transportation. So for instance, Cardozo and Bates Partner, so there's no need for buses there, um.
Jim Hill and Isabelle.
Jim Hill and Isabelle. So we, um, Callaway and North Jackson does, uh, requ- request transportation and due to inclement weather from time to time, but that's the.
How does that work, excuse me, interrupting you, it doesn't, this is extra, poodles on the ground and bus drivers and all? How, how is that not a cost?
Well, it's an in-kind donation, so it's not a di- uh, we don't write a check, but it is an, an in-kind donation. And, and honestly, the, the, um, partnerships that they have sought to provide funding for this want the district to have what they consider skin in the game. They want them to have some type of investment in the program in addition to staff time.
Great.
But we have, uh, worked with the Department of Transportation, uh, to ensure that it doesn't affect the normal routes with picking up students.
Oh, that's very helpful, thank you, it sounds like a very worthwhile program. And I hope that we can, I know on their webpage, they highlighted different cities and the work that the partnership was producing in the city. It'd be great if we could get some good press around the, the success of our students, our, our students and our mentors.
They have released various press releases from time to time, because we're the only district in the state of Mississippi that actually has the Teen Trend Setter Program. So they have spotlighted various, um, success stories. Uh, they also send notifications out to all of the partners nationwide. So from time to time, the program advisors will spotlight, uh, success stories. They'll have pictures that they share with our point of contact, who's in Jacksonville, Florida, and she will spotlight it on their website and on the listserv that she sends to, uh, all of the partners nationwide. But I'd be happy to follow those to you if you'd like to see them.
And I, I'm, I'm reminded that there was a caveat that, uh, there is a stipend for program advisors, but there's a caveat that sometimes that's withheld for various reasons, has that ever happened?
Unfortunately, it has. Uh, we are very transparent at the beginning of the year about what the benchmarks are for reporting, because we want to make sure that this has an impact on the students that we serve. So there are various bench points that the program advisors are required to enter the data so that we can, we're not just looking at the beginning and the end of the year, but there are different benchmarks throughout the year. Unfortunately, some of our program advisors have not met those benchmarks, so the stipends have been withheld.
Thank you.
It's only ha- it only happened once last year, um, and we've sent repeated emails uh, reminding them of the deadlines, but unfortunately, they did not meet the deadline.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, Board members, any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve item B, the Trend Setters, uh, M, uh, Agreement with JPS?
Sommo.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item B, all in favors, uh, excuse me, D, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's been approved, thank you, Ms. Faulkner. Item L, Dr. Merritt, uh, the approval of MOU between Jobs for Mississippi Graduates and JPS.
Yes ma'am, um, the administration has recommended approval of the memorandum of understanding between Jobs for Mississippi Graduates and Jackson Public School District. Ms. Ramona Williams.
Excuse me, Dr. Merritt, Doran, you give me some advice, we have a Board member who wants to recuse herself.
Yeah, she'll need to step out just a minute, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have Ms. Ramona Williams, who is the Executive Director, um, for Jobs for Mississippi Graduates, and she has distributed a folder with some data in it. Now, if it's oka- okay with you, I'll allow her to come to just share some of the data regarding the program.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees.
Good afternoon.
I am Ramona Williams, Executive Director of Jobs for Mississippi Graduates. I must say that it is indeed an honor to, uh, be before the Board on this afternoon. Um, as noted in your packet, there is a summary on the left-hand side. There's a summary of all the data that I have provided in the folder. Um, this year, this school year, we're currently serving 255 students in Jackson Public Schools in the Jobs for Mississippi Graduates Program. The average age of those students is 16. We have, um, 97 males, 156 females. Uh, as part of our program, we do an inventory assessment of the students coming in, and we have an electronic database where I'm able to have this particular information stored. Um, of the students this year, uh, 86.6% noted that they do intend to graduate from high school. Um, 12 of that number of, of our 255 said that they do desire to acquire GED. Um, of that number, 255, 49% say they do plan on working and attending a two-year college, and 48% of that number noted that they do plan on attending a four-year college or university. With this $70,000 that we're seeking from Jackson Public School District, with the number of students that we're currently serving, the per pupil cost is $274.50. That is an excellent per pupil cost for our program being in the Jackson Public School District. The data at the lower part of this particular summary notes that last year, we served 272 students. Um, our per pupil cost last year was $257.35. Of this number, we had 193 seniors, and I'm elated to report that 95% of those, 184, actually graduated from one of our Jackson Public Schools, high schools. Um, of our seniors last year, they amassed collectively $4,494,000 in scholarships. And that note is provided in your folder with each high school and the JMG participants that amassed the scholarships. Of our class of 2018, I'm happy to also report that 57% are currently enrolled in one of our two-year colleges or four-year universities. That's great. Um, of that number, last year, our seniors, we have 16% who are currently employed. Jobs for Mississippi Graduates is a staunch supporter of Jackson Public Schools. We've been partnering with the district for over 14 years. I've been aboard as, as Executive Director for seven years. And we have a great, I would like to think, relationship with Jackson Public Schools. My children, um, are graduates of Jackson Public Schools. My grandson is currently matriculating in Jackson Public Schools. We live here in Jackson, and we are invested in Jackson Public Schools. Um, as the packet so denotes, Jobs for Mississippi Graduates is one where we take pride in ensuring that the young people in our program, that we educate them, that we engage them, that we expose them, that we employ, and empower the young people in Jackson Public School District.
Thank you, uh, this has been very helpful to, uh, to learn of your work. And it's clear that, uh, a good number of our students are able to take advantage of this. And it seems like it's boosting our graduation rate as well.
Yes, I hope so. Thank you.
Uh, Board members, do you have questions or comments for Ms. Williams?
Uh, this is Ed Seveck, I have one question. I noticed that the funding string associated with this is Funding Code 2211. Are those Title I A dollars? I just wanted to ask for clarification.
Yeah, Dr. Merritt says yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comment, Board members? Uh, do I hear a motion to approve item L between JPS and Jobs for Mississippi Graduates?
Aye, so moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve item L, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item's approved, thank you, Ms. Williams, we appreciate your joining us. Dr. Merritt, item M.
All right, um, the administration recommends approval of a pool of consulting services, Bailey Education Group, Generation Ready, Green Education Services, and the Kirkland Group to provide lead partner support for Standard 20 and ELA math and science, and the schools are named in the, um, executive summary. And I will, as requested, um, share the, uh, PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Of the data and the evaluation, um, of programs. And this was presented to, uh, Dr. Murray and the leadership team, and so, uh, some of it includes some of our, um, partners that we currently have district-wide initiatives with. But I will just, for the purpose of this presentation, I will just focus on the lead, uh, partner support. But I do want to talk about, uh, our goals. Uh, Ms. Blackshear, and I'm not sure if she was able to make it. Um, she is Director of Research and Evaluation for Federal Programs. And two goals that we have, uh, this year is to increase the number of schools analyzing and utilizing data to drive instruction by 25% by the 2018-2019 school year, and by 50% by the end of the 2019, 20, 2019, 2020 school year. As well as goal number two, analyze programs and lead partners' data to determine effectiveness and return on investment based on a minimum of 30% gain. Uh, the next slide just basically talks about the programs and the lead partners. During the 2017-2018 school year, we, uh, had partnerships with two, uh, consulting groups to provide lead partner support, and, uh, they were, uh, Bailey Education Group as well as Green Education Services. Uh, on the next slide, and we just want to talk about, uh, some of the data, and be fair to both, uh, Bailey and Green in terms of reporting the data. As we analyze the data and the impact of their services, uh, it's important to note that we took a high-level overview. If the principal told us that, uh, a consultant was working with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, that's the information that we looked at. However, uh, when you look at the data, it can be somewhat misleading, and I'll talk about how we're going to refine this coming up. So when we look at, uh, Blackburn Middle School, where they received, uh, support from Bailey, uh, in ELA, we see where on the actual points that were gained, uh, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, you're able to see that, you're see able, able to see the, uh, points gaining growth. You're able to see the, uh, percentage points of, of the students that sustained. Uh, and so where we look at the drop, and this is will be for Bailey and Educa- Bailey and Green Education Services. So when we look at this, um, what can be somewhat misleading is that all teachers in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade did not receive lead partner support. Also, there may have been where the, uh, consultant was modeling small group instruction, and of course, during the time, and we took this off of their services, performed in the spring. Uh, they may have been dis- uh, demonstrating small group instruction with the teacher, with a group of students, and so this pool looked at all. So, um, I just want to make that, uh, put that clarification out there, uh, as you review the data. Uh, if you move to the next slide, we have Cardozo Middle School, where Green provided math support. And of course, it's much similar, um, to the previous slide. Uh, there were principals targeted specific teachers. And so, um, where- whereas, when we analyzed the data, we looked at seventh and eighth grade math overall. And so one of the things that we want to, uh, definitely talk about, um, and we addressed in the RFP, is normalizing the practices across the school. So you may be doing hat, providing the job embedded professional development to, uh, one teacher, but it's important that professional development sessions are conducted building wide so that practices are normalized, and we're able to see, uh, the impact of it. If we move forward, Kirksey and Powell. Pretty much the same, uh, data, and then the last one is Chastain, where they had, um, Bailey as their lead partner. So some things that we want to consider, um, and what we have included and how we will monitor this moving forward. Uh, the Board has been very clear that the data is important, and, uh, the data should drive our support and our funding and all of that. So this year, pending Board approval, when we determine, uh, the teachers that these consultants will work with, schools, as our accountability measure, will be, uh, responsible for keeping a tracking document on every student that that consultant impacts. So if that consultant is working with William Merritt, and William Merritt has a class load specifically in the secondary school of 135 students, on this sheet, all 135 students will go on that sheet, and we will evaluate every common, um, if it's a common, common weekly assessment, a nine, nine weeks benchmark assessment, but every assessment that that student takes will go in on this sheet, and we will evaluate how these students are performing at the end of each term, which is much different, uh, than it has been in the past. Uh, one thing, when we had the review and the presentations, one thing that, uh, MDE, through the School Improvement Office, notated is that we needed to allow principals to have say-so in this process. And so in doing so, and as they reviewed the data, and we really got granular with this process, some decided to choose one consultant for ELA and another consultant for math based on data. And, uh, the administration did support that selection. In that, and what has been expressed to, uh, potential, uh, lead partners, is that's going to force them to work together in order to bring out, uh, outcomes from, uh, of the school. So, um, those are, um, some of the things that we really want to talk about, and some of the things that we also want to look at is, um, for example, scheduling the su- the support. And we have a checklist that pending the approval, when these consultants go and, and visit with the principals, there are going to be a list of things that they look at. For example, scheduling, specifically on the high school level. For example, scheduling, specifically on the high school level. It's important if a school is on an AB block that the support is provided in a practice and a method where those teachers are receiving that support. We're looking at not only if these students are, the teachers, these students are in classes where the teachers are receiving this job embedded professional development, but are they involved in after-school tutorial programs? What additional support is being done? How are tutorials or any additional support, how is that being scheduled? And one thing that we really noted in this was student as well as teacher attendance. And reading some of the reports, of course, all lead partners have to submit weekly reports. If they were scheduled to come and a teacher was absent, that impacted their days in their service. Also, if students were habitually absent, this impacted their outcomes as well. So that's something that we're going to be monitoring, and as we monitor chronic absenteeism in the district, as these students get to a certain level where they are considered chronically absent, we're going to extract them from the data so that we can really see the true effect of this service. The other thing is, when did the consultants start? So last year, we, consultants started in November as well as March and April. So by the time we reviewed the data, we were more so doing an autopsy, and there was no time to really correct instructional practice. So by beginning the lead partner support this year in September and it running until May, the interval checkups will allow us to look at the data, adjust services, and additionally provide you with interim reports. So if there are decisions that need to be made in terms of services, we can make those tough decisions to make sure that we get the measurable outcomes that's needed in terms of this. That's pretty much all that I have concerning this, but I do feel comfortable that we will see better outcomes this year. And not only that, when principals schedule and meet with potential lead partners, as we have district-wide initiatives implemented in the school, they are responsible, those consultants are, they're all partners in this process. Everyone is on the train together, and we're all moving in the same direction.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. This has been very helpful information, and we appreciate your work and Dr. Murray's work and all of the principals and teachers who are working so hard to really serve our students in a meaningful effort and to make their good work and their effort reach fruition. So we appreciate your pushing our vendors and our partners in this work to do all they can to help us understand what's working and how we can improve.
Yes, ma'am.
We're looking forward to a great year.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Board, are we good? Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Real quick, can I ask two questions?
Dr. Merritt, you have a question from Dr. Seveck.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Merritt. First question, to what do you attribute the lower levels of dropped, in the dropped category at Whitten and Hardy relative to the other schools?
Well, one of the things that we looked at is, those are two schools according to absentee data that have high absentee rates. So student attendance is key, and that's one common theme that we noticed at those two schools that may have attributed to the drop.
Okay. Okay. And then my second question is, I know that there is a line item in this pool of consultants for Kirkland, and that group has been identified by an independent third party as having some challenges in working with the district. And so could you please share the rationale for including them and how we're including them in this pool of consultants?
Yes, sir. So as a part of this process, all consultants, when we issued the RFP, the consultants, all that responded to the RFP had an opportunity to come and present their data and make presentations to the principals. The selection was made based on the presentation that the Kirkland Group shared and based on recent data that they shared of their successes in districts that they have worked in in the past two to three years. And so that was the reason they responded to the RFP, I think would be my first response to the question, and based on the presentation that they'd made at the meeting and the data that they shared with principals, that was the reason for proceeding with them.
So you're comfortable in their ability to deliver on these services?
Yes, sir. I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve item M, approval of our lead partners in support for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, that we approve item M. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that item has been approved. Moving on to consent agenda items personnel, Ms. Lyons. We have two items, approval of addendum for signing bonus and approval of staff personnel matters.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Hairston, members of the board. On behalf of the administration, I present for approval, A, signing bonus addendum, and B, staff personnel matters, as listed in board material, with the exception of I-1 listed in staff personnel matters.
Dorine, I would like to pull something off of the staff personnel for executive session. And that's item A8?
Item A8, pull for executive session.
I would also like to pull A17, A21, and I believe I heard I-1 was already pulled.
I forgot my question.
Those would be for executive session?
Yes, so, so we want to prove A first and then do B with the exceptions?
We'll discuss those in executive session, so we can just...
Just A. These are for executive session.
That's in here. Everything in B except...
Oh, pulled, I got you, I got you. Thank you, thank you. So we can move to approve A and B with those pulled items under B, A8, A17, A21, and I-1.
I-1 is being excluded. It's not being brought to the board for consideration.
Oh, I-1 is being excluded. Thank you. Did you hear that, Dr. Seveck?
I did not.
I-1 is being pulled for consideration by the board. Not being brought forth.
It is being pulled from consideration completely?
Yes.
Okay, if that's the case, then there's no need to discuss A17 and A21 in executive session.
But we do want to hold A8 for executive session?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That being said, board, do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we approve consent agenda items A and B, with the exception of A8 under B. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
This is the other business board. I hear no call for other business. Do I hear have a consideration to hold an executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved, I hear second to hold executive session?
Second.
It's moved and properly seconded, all in favor of considering to hold an executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Second.
Hearing none, we will...
Close the meeting.
We will close the meeting to consider holding executive session. Thank you all for joining us.